I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners. The ring of the meeting is ready for anyone in our, uh, spread out positions. Those of us in a way above.
My mic is up.
Oh, we're electronically with you now. Thank you, Mike. Uh, I will mention right now, uh, we anticipate having this sort of format for at least, uh, the four main meetings, and you can anticipate that, uh, and you can check with our county manager's office about any change or process or procedure that might involve you during that before meeting. In the meantime, the momentary vote will stand for our invocation, which will be delivered by our county manager Lance Metzler, and Commissioner Reese Pearl will be acting, leaving us in the pledge of allegiance. So with that said...
If you would please join me. Standing. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for all your gifts and wisdom that you give to us to make good decisions on behalf of our populace of Rockingham County. Please help us return to you in search for answers so that when decisions are made, they are made for what is pleasing to you. Look after our board of commissioners, our staff, to provide leadership that you have asked them to do on your behalf, and help our board make decisions that will make positive impacts to our community. We ask that you bless us, look over us, and give us strength to lead with honesty and integrity. In God's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you've had the agenda for about 10 days now, and a chance to look over it. It's in front of you. Is there a comment or motion concerning tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Travis?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the April 20th agenda minus, uh, number eight.
Minus item eight and plus...
Close session meetings with, uh...
With council.
Council, yeah, but no...
And economic development.
Under what provisions?
Further comment?
I'll second that.
We do have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Gentlemen, you also had the consent agenda. It's in front of you. These are items that are not of an extensive nature or elaborate, normally require elaboration, but if you do have questions, please contact our county manager, again Lance Metzler, and he will answer those. Having made that explanation, item five is a consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Further conversation or question? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Moving on to item six, and I should have Eric Woolridge electronically with us. Is that correct, Eric?
Maybe not.
I got you loud and clear. Does everybody hear Eric?
Yeah.
Eric, you're on with your presentation of the land use plan preliminary findings. And we have Carrie here hovering over your map.
Hello, Eric.
Hey, Carrie. All right, well, I appreciate being able to speak with you all this evening. Little bit a new way of doing business, for sure. Um, so for those of you who don't know him, I'm Eric Woolridge, President of Destination by Design, and been working alongside Carrie and other stakeholders in the community.
Hey, Eric, can you commute your computer?
I think Eric dropped off the line, Mr. IT.
Yeah.
Eric, can you hear us?
Yeah, we got you.
Yeah, the IT guy's asking you to... What do you want him to do to his computer?
Mute his computer. Mute his computer.
Talk through the conference line and not through your computer.
Did you hear that, Eric? Talk through the conference line rather than the computer.
Okay.
I got you loud and clear. That's your signal to continue.
All right, sorry. So you're okay? You guys can hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, so moving on to the second slide there, Carrie. Really three parts to the meeting here. One, just want to provide you with a quick general update on progress. Secondly, we need consensus on two main items tonight. One of those is what we are calling our emerging themes that the project oversight committee and other stakeholders, focus groups, et cetera, have kind of, um, put together regarding those land use plans. And probably most importantly is future land use maps and how we put together, um, how we're showing different transects across the county in terms of growth density. All of this dovetails into your water sewer infrastructure, your expansions along 220, et cetera. And then finally, just second, some questions. So this is not meant to be a super comprehensive presentation, but really narrow down towards some of the key pieces that we need your approval on so we can really start moving into the more intensive phases of the process. Uh, this is slide number three. You'll see a number of focus groups, interviews that we've conducted with economic development group, realtors, partnership operations, and the advisory board. We had an awesome, uh, call with a number of land developers in the county, your infrastructure leaders, uh, you know, your engineer, your public works director, and also we've dealt with, um, your tourism for the county as well. All of this kind of combined together to highlight a number of key, uh, themes, issues, which I'm sure you all are quite familiar with, and you can see there on the screen. Uh, slide number four, we're looking at the framework map. We work directly with the steering committee, a multi-site team, throughout the entire county, where neighborhood commercials would be appropriate. Uh, if you look along the 22074 corridor there, you'll see a number of parcels that are highlighted. All of those are 50-plus acre parcels that are kind of in that, uh, pinkish-mauve looking color there. Do you notice that we've kind of plotted out the municipal areas and their EPGs? Those areas, of course, are important as it relates to water, sewer, infrastructure, as it relates to economic development and the like. However, when it comes to the land use development aspect of this project, you all don't, do not have jurisdiction there, so you see that those jurisdictions come into play when we talk about certain elements. When we talk about the land use elements, which we're talking about tonight, it doesn't come into play as much. That being said, uh, slide number three, emerging themes. We determined, or we've come up with...
Do you want...
...names of staff and with the project oversight committee, coordinated growth, economic prosperity, housing variety, that was a relatively new one that was added after our last meeting, natural resource conservation, outdoor recreation, and enhanced transportation and mobility. Slide number six, where you kind of just simplify each of these items. When it comes to coordinated growth, we're looking at predictable, easy-to-understand zoning and development decisions. The development community knows this. They can easily understand through the land use plan, through the UDO, what has a good chance of getting rezoned, what doesn't, where's the infrastructure going, where's it not, and the like. So just creating more predictability in the development sphere. Economic prosperity, you all have an aggressive economic development approach, program, it's well-staffed. Of course, we want to continue with targeted industrial growth, infrastructure development, and we also want to put broadband into that as well. You could put the tourism aspect into that, which is a big part of that. We've kind of pushed it into the natural resource conservation, outdoor recreation, but in the land use plan, tourism will, of course, be developed, will be recognized as economic prosperity as well. The third item there is housing variety. We're looking beyond just your single-family, kind of rural residential, but how do we move into either a high-density single-family or really target areas for multifamily development, particularly with your expansion of water sewer infrastructure? We want to take advantage of that infrastructure development, that infrastructure investment, and get a nice return on that with, you know, decreasing the population, getting, uh, a good value of development on those properties. So all of that's important. Natural resource conservation, outdoor recreation, that's been important to everyone we've talked to, whether or not it's land developers, or whether or not it's, of course, those that are tied to tourism or recreation. But everyone is interested in maintaining Rockingham County's character, protecting its waterways, enhancing public access to the outdoors, and they feel like that's a great way to encourage young people to stay, to attract a workforce, and so forth. And then finally is enhanced transportation and mobility, primarily tied with intensity of coordination, the targeted load improvement. I'll stop there real quickly. Are you guys still with me?
We are.
Okay. Any questions so far?
Carrie on, Eric.
All right. Okay. Uh, Carrie, uh, slide number seven, the land use transect.
Yeah.
We're going to break the county down into seven different districts. Uh, in land use language, they're called transects, and you see this very naturally in Rockingham County, where you go from rural area, and then things get a little bit more developed, and a little bit more developed until you're in one of your downtown environments. This is a very natural development pattern that occurs, and it's something that you all are thinking of when you're making these decisions and zoning decisions. We're just trying to make it very explicit, and again, coming back to that word predictable. So there's six of these. You've got conserve land, rural residential agriculture, G1 is your low-density growth areas, G2 is controlled growth, G3 your mixed-use center, and then G4 is your downtown, which primarily are outside of the county zoning jurisdiction. Slide number eight, we're trying to go from land use transect into a future land use map that's customized for Rockingham County, and then with that, we can start to create these more predictable zoning and development decisions that are going to be reflected in the UDO. So just to jump into each one of these really quickly, uh, the next slide, your O1, conserve land, these are properties that will never really be developed, either federal, state, or local park, your actual river itself, or the floodway areas, not necessarily the floodplain, which can be filled and developed in some scenarios, but your floodway areas, which cannot. And then, of course, your river access area, and how that should read. Uh, slide number 10 is your O2, rural residential agriculture. Here, you're moving into lands that have traditionally been ag, or very rural. You're going to see single-family occur there. It's still in what's become and developed with a housing subdivision. There's nothing wrong with that. There's nothing that would preclude them from doing so. However, there's most likely not going to be any water or sewer infrastructure really around the vicinity. Your floodplain areas is also being incorporated into these areas. G1 are your low-density growth areas. Here, you're going to find some limited forestry agriculture, of course. You might start to see a pickup of eco-tourism. You're going to see some low-density residential, maybe some small-scale multifamily, and hopefully more as the exception than the rule, you would see some limited kids' convenience retail uses, although this is not meant to be the area where we are trying to push those to occur, but we do want some least flexibility in the land use plan for you all to make the right decisions based on a particular area and so forth, so we're not trying to be really rigid with these particular districts. G2 are your controlled growth areas. These are specific nodes that are within the county's jurisdiction. As I mentioned before, the project steering committee and staff really helped us hone in on these particular nodes that are in the county. The best example I can give you is, these are the nodes where it would be most appropriate for your Dollar Generals to go, or that type of neighborhood commercial to occur along those lines. There might be some civic uses and vigil on those lines there as well. Uh, G3, your mixed-use center, like the 22074 corridor, you have water and sewer infrastructure for sure at most of these. This is slide 13 that I'm on, Carrie, did you bring?
Yes.
Mixed residential subdivisions, office institutional, regional commercial centers, industrial districts. And when I say mixed-use residential, I'm not necessarily, I'm saying like, you know, part of it might be, um, townhomes, another part of it might be apartments, and the other might be some detached single-family that's relatively highly exists. But looking for a mix of use, we're looking for developer creativity, and we have certainly a water and sewer at our fingertips. The last district, again, these are going to be pushed primarily into your municipal areas, which is bringing us to your high-density mixed residential in your downtown or village centers. It's not to say that we could not plan for such a center where you have water and sewer infrastructure. If we get further along in the planning process, and work with the steering committee, it could be where we do make some, a village center type of recommendation somewhere. Slide 15 is the future land use map. When we take this entire transect and we apply it to Rockingham County, you see how it plays out. Uh, the G2 growth areas are the orange dots that kind of show your nodes, this is where you want to push, again, that limited commercial retail, kind of rural neighborhood commercial retail. Surrounded right outside of that is your low-density kind of growth area, and then beyond that, you know, you have your standard low-density rural residential and so forth. Uh, moving along the 22074 corridor, obviously, we see the intensity pick-up with the G3 mixed-use center and corridor, and just outside of that, we've pushed kind of a transition zone with the G2 controlled growth areas to kind of begin to lay this out. This is not, these are not zoning this. These are not going to pop into your UDO and be your new, and represent the framework for your new zoning here. That is not the point of the future land use map. The land use map is meant to provide you with the different transects, provide flexibility for both elected officials, for staff, and for developers, but to kind of point the county in a certain direction for growth and so forth. All of this should line up with future investments in transportation, your future and plant, or your existing and future planned investments in water, sewer infrastructure, and so forth. And it's meant to be flexible, where new areas can be zoned, identified. We're going to set up policies for each one of these areas, and if a developer comes along and says, you know what, my area kind of meets the criteria for your G1 or G2, and this is why, all of that will be in the planning documents, and you can easily apply that. But we've kind of provided a rational nexus between the zoning and, or future zoning decisions, and the land use plan, future land use map. So with that being set up, I'll stop again. There's only one slide left, as we talk about next steps, but we'd like to answer any questions regarding the transect and the future land use map.
Questions, gentlemen? Eric, we're ready to move on.
Okay. Uh, the last slide, uh, next step, we're going to work with writing policies for each of the planning elements, land use, economic development, transportation, recreation. We're going to be incorporating a series of bridges and graphics that help illustrate those policies, and we're probably in the UDO draft, we're getting around the 50% mark, and, um, in terms of reworking your entire ordinance, and then, of course, we've got to ensure that you have conformity with the Minnesota General Statute 160D as well. The project is absolutely on schedule in terms of the land use plan, and also in terms of the UDO draft. Um, so that's our update right now, and with that being said, I'll answer any final questions. Paul?
No, great job. Thank you.
It's been very helpful. What I suspect is going to happen, Eric, is we're going to have questions as we go along, and, uh, I think Commissioner Berger's kind of taken the lead in following this, but we're all interested, and we'll try to keep up. And I would encourage you, either through Carrie or directly, if you have questions about your direction or anything that might be controversial, we'd like to hear that sooner rather than later. Commissioners, any other comments? Eric, uh, thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
We're going to move on to item seven now. George Murphy, Town of Whitworth Administrator.
George Murphy, I'm going to be George Murphy for the night, at least for this brief moment. It's kind of scary, but, uh, Whitworth's currently constructing their playground and their parks, and they're going to have a restroom out there. They've asked that you all waive their capacity fee of $2,000. I would recommend the waiver of that. Back in 2002, Whitworth committed $200,000 to the county to run sewer down 38, for 38 homes, down 87. It was, um, it was a CDBG grant, and they put up the match for that, so I would recommend the waiver of those $2,000.
Questions?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
My second.
Motion by Commissioner Purtle, seconded by Mr. Travis to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Item eight has been removed from your agenda for this evening. We're moving to item nine, and, uh, Mrs. Susan Young, who's our interim director of Public Health, I believe has a guest speaker for this. I thought it already had. For those of you that are only listening in to us, we have Susan Young from our own health department, and we have representative from both of our hospitals. Steve, thank you for being here. Cindy, thank you for being here, and I believe you're the leader of the pack tonight, Cindy.
Okay. And which do I use? That's a band. All right, well, thank you for your time on your agenda. I'm Cindy Farrar, the president of Antipen Hospital, and just wanted to give you an update on what's happening over in Meeksville at Antipen. One of the things that I always carry with me is something that keeps us all grounded and why we're even here as a health system, and I won't go through all of this with you, obviously, but our bread promise, excuse me, is that we'll be right here with you. And I think I'm really seeing that manifest itself in one of our values, which is taking care of our communities, and you can certainly read that at your, at your leisure to see what we're all about. So we're here to talk about COVID-19, and back in March, when the recommendation came out that health systems and hospitals across the country start to postpone elective and emergent medical procedures or surgeries. Everyone else had left the con. Keep going? Okay.
Hit the end button.
So we did discontinue those, and we'll hopefully pick up in May or June, just depending on how this pandemic continues to pan out. It has had an economic impact on our hospitals and health systems with the month of March, which really accounts for maybe a half of a month for our, our reaction to COVID-19. Antipen Hospital experienced a $400,000 loss, and that's not a unfavorable variance to budget, it's an actual loss of dollars. And Cone Health as a system, just for the month of March, has lost 13 million in, um, net revenue or net income. And this is by postponing a lot of surgeries and things that hopefully will pick that back up later in time, but also investing in things that we have had to do with additional PPE, the protective equipment for our employees. We also have been able to shorten our turnaround time on the testing, which is great. We've been able to in-house that and gives us a two-hour turnaround time. And how we care for our staff, of course, PPE and supplies are very important. We instituted a couple weeks ago universal masking for all of our employees, so everyone in our facility wears a mask. They are also encouraged to and required to do six-foot distancing where at all possible from each other. We started a process that originated, or we got the idea and process from the University of Nebraska for re-sterilizing and reusing the N95 mask. So we can do that about up to five times, and what we do in our sterile processing department, where we sterilize surgical instruments, we have things that look like clotheslines hanging with masks hanging, and we use ultraviolet light to, um, de-sterilize those. And we changed our model of care. You know, if you've ever been in the hospital and hooked up to an IV pump, the thing beeps constantly for various reasons, so we put them in the hallways, so the nurse doesn't have to dawn the PPE every time he or she goes into room. It saves on the PPE, and they can address the, um, IVs that way. Things that we do need as a health system are listed here. This is our wish list. Of course, a lot of masks, goggles, safety glasses, disposable gowns and things, and we've had some companies step up to the plate and change their manufacturing process to help us with that. We've also instituted telehealth in all of our Cone Health practices across the network. We've also are offering free e-visits. We've been able to offer e-visits to our community for a couple years now, but we're waiving the fee for that, and if you've never used it, it's pretty neat. You don't even have to leave your, your house if you have the ability to, to get online. And also a free self-assessment that we encourage people to do prior to coming to the hospital, and we encourage them to contact their physician first. But getting on to the numbers here, um, I don't think you have, no, the updated numbers, and again, this is as of today, and I'll tell you what these are. Right now, Antipen Hospital and Alamance Regional Medical Center over in Burlington, we do not have any COVID-19 patients in our hospital, and that is by design. Our two campuses are really more triage hospitals and helping our community. If someone comes into our emergency department, which is on a daily basis that we triage COVID-19 patients, if they are at high risk, we will transfer them to Greensboro. What we have done is reopen the former women's hospital on Green Valley Road. As you know, the, the women's hospital moved to the Cone campus back in February, and thank goodness they did. The perfect, the timing was perfect. We've been able to reopen that campus and, and really cohort patients there for obvious reasons, where we can congregate the expertise, not only on the nursing, but the physician side, but also our PPE can be focused there. So Green Valley Campus right now, which has only been open for a week, has 24 positive patients. Eight patients are in ICU, seven are on a vent, and the others are in regular hospital rooms. Moses Cone's has a few patients. They have seven positive patients, three in ICU and two on event, and Wesley Long has four, one in ICU and one on the vent. We have performed about 1,400 tests, 132 have been positive, and just over 1,200 negative, and we've been able to, with positive patients, discharge from home... And we've been able to, with positive patients discharged from home to home to recover. There have been 56 of those. But our plan is to cohort patients at the Green Valley Campus and at the Wesley Long Campus if need be. So the Moses Cone Campus, as our tertiary trauma center, can focus on other patients. And as you know, Rockingham County today, I guess, has like 19 positives, and there have been two deaths. And of those that have passed away within our Cone Health system and did not survive the COVID-19 virus, all have been above the age of 70 and had underlying medical conditions. There's always a question of how prepared we are with ICU beds and ventilators. Antipen Hospital has 12 ICU beds, eight of them are full today. Cone Health has 195 ICU beds, and 110 are in use, and that includes the Green Valley Campus. Ventilators, Antipen, we normally would have seven. We sent five of those to Greensboro to use. We have two, and none are in use right now. And Cone Health has 114 ventilators, and 45 are in use. So I think we're sitting pretty well when it comes to ICU beds and ventilators. Getting on to, I guess, my biggest concern, you know, I feel like we're prepared, even though we struggle periodically with PPE availability, is the community spread. And not knowing the true existence of it here in our county, because just being rural doesn't mean that we're safe from this. And when you look at the number of people that work in, say, Guilford County but live in our county, it's 41% of our population here commute. And giving their commuting, some of them into an area that's more heavily populated and may not be as compliant with social distancing, it really increases the opportunity to be a carrier. And as you know, many carriers are asymptomatic for at least a week. And it could be any one of us in this room that have not experienced the symptoms yet. Quickly, the next slide is my favorite slide. We've got some data analytic folks within Cone Health that help us with our own projections and that lowering the number of new cases is important, but it doesn't mean the virus is disappearing. It suggests instead that social distancing is working and has slowed down the spread of the disease and really elongated the course of the pandemic. And you hear a lot about flattening a curve. Well, flattening the curve strategy was really designed to help lessen the surge of patients so the healthcare systems, really across the country, would have more time to build capacity, discover better treatments, and eventually come up with a vaccine. The flatter the curve, the harder it is to identify the peak. Once you get past the peak, doesn't mean it's over. It's just starting, the starting time for the rest of the response. So it's not a cliff that you go up and then you just drop to zero. We've got to come down the other side of it. So we can't take our foot off the gas pedal too soon because we run the risk of developing a peak situation again. And if you go back and look at any of the things that happened in 1918 pandemic of the flu, which affected a quarter million of the world's population and killed 50 million people, months after the surge or their peak, there were several spikes in cases, but that second surge was the deadliest. It wasn't the first surge. So we've got some things to learn from in this pandemic. And then finally, my ask is, we don't believe that the governor went far enough. I think he's left too much that is left to question and interpretation. But we ask that you fully support the stay-at-home order as well as the social distancing, because it's obviously working. The curve is getting flatter. But as a curve gets flatter, the tails go out longer, and that means it's going to last longer, but we're not going to have those peak surges that we might not be able to handle. And that's all. I can answer any questions, or if you want to wait until the end of?
Let's wait until the end, but thank you very much. Most informative. Steve, welcome.
Thank you. For those I haven't met, I'm Steve Eblin, the interim president at UNC Rockingham. Started October 30th and really enjoying interacting with the folks in Rockingham County. It's been a pleasure. So I'm going to start, like Cindy, this is kind of what UNC Health is about. I'm not going to go through this slide in detail at all. You can have access to it later. But the mission of UNC Health as a state-owned facility is to care for, improve the health and well-being of North Carolinians and others that we serve, and the others that we serve, especially in this county, Southern Virginia. And we do that through our patient care and our education and research arms together. They interact. I want to start off with some statistics that, these are wrong, these are as of Friday. Some of them are still right, but we have had one COVID-19 positive patient in the hospital. They are still there. They are in the ICU. She was not required a ventilator yet. And we've got two at the hospital right now that are pending. Their tests are pending, as to whether they're positive or not. And the one patient we have, as I mentioned, is still there. The numbers on the right are the, just what we've tested at Rockingham, this is certainly not system-wide, and we use UNC's lab for our tests. So the hospital numbers are, we've performed 63 tests as of noon today. 60 of those were negative. One has been positive, and again, two are pending. We also opened five or six weeks ago something we call the Respiratory Diagnostic Center, and the intent of that is to keep people out of the emergency department so that we don't bring infection into the hospital unless they're high acuity. And at the Respiratory Diagnostic Center, we have tested 90 patients. 86 of those have been negative, four have been positive. They're all being, they're all at home. None of those four had to be admitted. And a clinician from Chapel Hill checks in with them every day and to make sure that they, if their condition is worsening, they're directed to the right place, and we have zero pending results. We are getting new projections. UNC is collaborating with Duke and Wake Med to develop projections. We get those projections refreshed every Wednesday. And the more we get them refreshed and the more observation time they have, the greater the confidence interval is. It's pretty amazing, the science behind the projections. And then we obviously report to UNC every day about our status. We look at that projection 30 days out, and do we have the PPE to be prepared for that? Do we have the staff to be prepared for that? We set up a tent that, because we are caring for patients locally at UNC Rockingham, that's based on their acuity. Obviously, we're not going to take care of patients we can't take care of safely, and we'll transfer those to another organization. But we've got this triage tent at the emergency department that you see on the right there. And this allows us, as I mentioned, we're trying to keep, unless they're really acutely ill, we're trying to keep the infection out of the building. So this triage system can either direct them to the process to go to the Respiratory Diagnostic Center. If we have suspected COVID, or they show up and say, I've been positively tested for COVID, we have turned part of our emergency department into a COVID-designated unit. It's not, you can't access it from inside the ED, where the general public is anyway. And it's a four-room unit and with air scrubbers, et cetera, so that it's safe to care for those patients, and they don't spread the infection to the rest of the emergency department. And then if they're not COVID or COVID, suspected COVID, then they're just taken back to the regular emergency department. We have designated a, for those of you who know anything about that hospital, we've got four floors. The fourth, to my knowledge, has been used in forever. Reese has been on the board. He probably knows better than I do. The third floor, we don't use very much. And so we made a decision and implemented it last Tuesday to designate the third floor as a COVID unit only. It is entirely negative pressure, has 25 beds on it, and any suspected COVID patient or positive patient goes there unless they're sick enough to need our ICU. We've got nine rooms in our ICU. One of those really is not a good room for COVID patients, but we converted the other eight to negative pressure so that we can keep COVID patients in the ICU. And our PACU, our post anesthesia care unit, that can become a relief ICU for non-COVID patients if we need to put it in place. Something else that we've been asked to do by UNC Health is identify how many beds we could set up in a surge beyond our licensed capability. I don't think we'll ever need this. I really don't, not on wood. But we could set up, we're licensed for 108 beds. We could set up an additional 46, and six of those being ICU beds, if we needed to. And really, I think the only way we would need to is if other UNC hospitals started sending non-COVID patients to us, because they were full with COVID patients. But to Cindy's point, if we take the right actions in terms of social distancing and staying at home, the curve's going to stay flat for a while, and these numbers won't come into play. If we relax that too much or too abruptly, then unfortunately, that could be a reality. So really, as I listened to Cindy talk, I felt like my presentation is Cindy's presentation 15 miles northwest of doing all the same things. And I want to thank Cindy and Susan for the collaboration. We've been talking to each other a fair amount or emailing each other a fair amount and sharing information with each other. But like Antipen and like most hospitals in the country, we have stopped all non-emergency procedures and surgeries until further notice. We may, we may relax that a little bit and start doing some surgeries in the next week, two weeks. That's still up for debate, but that discussion is underway. And it, excuse me, and one of the other things I wanted to mention, I did mention that the lab is in Chapel Hill. They developed their own tests four or five weeks ago, four weeks ago, I think. And that slide says results in four to six hours. As of today, it's two to four hours that we can get results. When we were first using the LabCorp before UNC had its test, it was a seven, eight-day turnaround, and that was not real timely or real helpful. And UNC is recognized as a national leader in its testing. Dr. Wesley Burks, who's the CEO of UNC Health, was on the Today Show talking about testing a few weeks ago, and UNC is currently developing an antibody test that should be ready in about 10 days. And again, as Cindy talked about with Cone Health, we have virtual options for our patients, telephone visits, virtual visits with providers, the Respiratory Diagnostic Center that I described to you a minute ago. There's a helpline that anybody in the state can call to really do the telephone triage for what the patient ought to do. That does not have to be a UNC patient, that's open to the public. And then for the Respiratory Diagnostic Centers, I think I mentioned this earlier, but they have a clinician check in with them every day if they're at home. And there's a self-assessment tool, Chatbot, that you can go on UNC's website and do a self-assessment to see if you should be taking some steps. We also are doing universal masking at Rockingham. That is for everybody in the building, not just employees, and maintaining social distance, physical distancing. Also, we can, sorry, I didn't finish that slide. We also can sterilize and reuse the N95s, and we've got about 50 folks working from home right now. Tried to get as many people as we could out of the building. For our team members, it's incredibly stressful. I'll tell you, ironically, the anxiety level has come down as we've seen more potential patients come to our emergency department, and certainly with the admission of some ruleouts and a positive. Once they realize they're trained to do this and we've got the PPE to protect them, the anxiety level went down a lot. But we're still trying to do as many things as we can to recognize the stress that they're under. And there's an emotional support hotline, the helpline that they can call, Employee Assistance. There are certified well-being coaches that UNC has hired to be there for our team members. There are wellness webinars on various subjects, stress, anxiety, control, things of that nature. And then that little girl is the daughter of one of our employees, and she wanted to come draw some messages for our employees on the sidewalk, and so that was pretty cool to see happen. Community support's been fantastic, and I know that Cindy's experienced that as well. I'm not going to go through those. We've had PPE donations, lots of food brought to the hospital. Nobody's going to starve during this pandemic. And Little Caesar, excuse me, Pizza Hut is not on there. I learned this morning that they also brought pizza during the weekend. And so with that...
And I share information with you guys every day, so my information will be brief. Currently, as of this afternoon, we have 20 cases here within the county. All parts of the county is affected. We added Roughland to the list this afternoon. So that is, includes Eden, Meeksville, Roughland, Stables, Stokesdale, Madison. So we are pretty blanketed all over the county with cases. And the majority of cases are linked to other cases and outbreaks in other counties. So that is a good thing for our county in itself to say it's not all homegrown. We have had some cases that have been linked to other communities and counties. Community transmission is still noted in some cases, so that means that, like both of these people have said, we could all be walking around and just be asymptomatic right now and still have COVID-19. We are still doing contact tracing on every single case that we have, and we are working very diligently. My staff is tracing back contacts, and we're going out to see where these people have been, where they work, who they've been in contact with, have they had gatherings at their homes, and are these people sick? We are calling, and we are answering a ton of questions each and every day from the community. And we are isolating all positive cases. That is our standard regimen. They are being isolated until one, either their employer puts them back to work or the 14 days, and the criteria is met for their symptoms to be resolved and them to be a febrile. Our state plans are asking us to ramp up testing, do contact tracing on all positive cases, which we're already doing, and do data collection, which we already had in place prior to this with our influenza-like illness going on. And I'm kind of envious of these guys because they have very rapid testing, and we're still three days out with our test results from state testing. We did receive some information today from Quest, which is our in-house lab, and that will, they have promised to kind of have a quicker turnaround time to maybe 24 to 48 hours for our results from our in-house lab. But still, the price of that is $199 a pop, and we are getting insurance payments for that. But if people do not have a way to pay for that, in the long run, we ramp up all this testing. I think that is something that's going to need to be discussed at that time. Next steps from the county from a public health standpoint, follow our governor's standard state of emergency and executive orders, follow the county's state of emergency, continue to work together with these people in our community to serve our citizens, share information and collaborate on cases and contact tracing of these individuals. And I want to thank both of these guys. They have worked very well with me in getting their data and their testing to me, and that is some information I hope to put together for you guys hopefully soon. And when I get someone who can help with that, we will do that. And assist with PPE attainment and disbarcement. We are getting calls daily from physicians' offices in different areas, and we are assisting with getting them PPE and what they need. So we are still all working together, working very hard to protect everyone, and we're getting ready to take the next steps, and we will all work together and decide what that means for all of us, and we'll do that together. All right, so questions? You can ask questions of all three of us or individual, however you guys want to do that.
Okay. Sir, Mr. Chairman. First question is probably for Steve. Steve, I noticed that in your slide presentation, you had two patients pending test results, and you stated that UNC R has made a lot of movement in the return of those test results. I just wonder, is there something holding up these two tests? Are we still getting them two to four hours, or how does that work?
So the test results are done in two to four hours. It's reported we get it within about 24.
About 24?
Yeah.
Okay. And you used the term, and this may be a question for you and Cindy to double team, in the PowerPoint that was presented... in the PowerPoint that was presented, Steve, you used the term that the line has flattened. Are you talking about new cases? Or I know there can be some terminology, number of deaths contributed to COVID-19 and cases when we talk about the curve. And when we talk about flattening, I've read both sides of that that says that, you know, when we talk about flattening the curve, we're talking about reducing the number of deaths as a result of COVID-19. Yet, in the PowerPoint presented by, presented by Annie Penn, that Cindy presented, it said that we're likely to peak in the next 30 to 60 days, which is conflicts with what I understood you to say.
I misspoke. So the projection model that I talked about?
Yes.
It shows it flattening in the next five to seven weeks. So it's pretty consistent with what Cone's doing.
Is that new cases or deaths?
That's cases.
Okay.
Positive cases.
Yeah.
There are no projections on, that I'm aware of, on how many of those cases, how many of those patients would die.
And that's, and that gets back to where I actually read an article today. It was in the Charlotte Observer that talked about, according to North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, the coronavirus deaths were, hit a peak on April the 13th at 23 people. And since that date, has continuously dropped. Is that your understanding?
Yeah. And the curve that we're talking about is just the number of positive cases.
So there's two different curves that you're talking?
Two different curves, yes.
Okay. But there probably some correlation between the two curves, I would think, since we don't have a cure.
They should mirror each other pretty well.
Yeah.
And the projections that Cindy and I show, are showing, they're not going to be exact because Cone's using their model and UNC's using the model, but.
And I guess that's what's kind of confusing because there's so many models and, you know, and actually what I was reading from, it comes from, obviously, the, this was from the University of Washington and through the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. So I guess that's what's confusing is that where you look depends on what data you receive and how that data is interpreted.
Exactly. And it all depends on what part of the country you're in and what state you're in, and quite honestly, what county you're in. Because everybody's going to have their own curve.
Yes.
There is a great website out there that I tend to monitor for decision-making around the availability of hospital beds in our state. You can actually go in by county. It's covidatnow.org. And it changes every day, but it mirrors pretty much what our analysts are saying as far as when the peak will come. And again, the peak is not this huge peak, it's going to be a little hill. Because we are bringing the number of positive cases down because you've done the right thing. And the governor has done the right thing. I mean, we're very grateful for the governor stepping up and doing what he did. It's now a matter of really enforcing it at the local level to make it one.
Mr. Chair. I've got a question for Susan. During your presentation, you mentioned that there was some data you were going to do when you can get somebody to do it.
Yes, sir.
Can you elaborate on what you meant by that? Or is somebody not doing something for you that needs to?
No, no, no. No, we just have to have people that kind of have time to correlate data and put it into a form that's easy for everyone to understand. So we're going to just be working with hopefully some of our health education people and people within our department to be able to kind of put that together in a form that's easy for you guys to understand and will be easy to use for you guys.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You bet.
Okay. I'll go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say frontline employees, I hope you tell them all how much the citizens of Rockham County and what we appreciate what y'all are doing. And that goes with EMS, you know, rescue, first responders, and especially all your nursing staff. And I hope you understand, we're here, if you need anything, if you let Lance know, we will try our best to get it for you. But I do appreciate everything y'all do. I just have a couple of questions. One of the big questions that's been going around is called elective surgeries. I know Cone and UNC stopped it for a while. When is the anticipation of starting elective surgeries back? And are you planning on gradually starting it or is it going to be all at once?
Well, I could say it won't be all at once. We have a team of surgeons across our network with OR leaders really looking at, of course, which ones do you start first? Because it's kind of, it's going to be like hairdressers.
Right.
You know? Yeah, how do you get that appointment when they can open back up? But there's got to be a method and a plan, and we'll have one that's tailored to each of our hospitals. It will not be all at once. And I don't anticipate it until probably late June before we really start seeing a meaningful increase. And I, you know, I'd like to see it sooner for economic reasons as well because it's really hurting us.
Right.
But we want to be very thoughtful in that approach.
Right.
So we won't flip a switch and just start doing surgeries all at once either. I don't know whether we'll be at the end of June or not. And I can tell you, those discussions just started last week at the system level. And I know that, just like Cindy's folks, it's a team of surgeons and OR nurses that are making those calls and will follow their direction.
Right, thank you. Another question I have is, you know, and I appreciate you working with Health Department and y'all working together. A lot of times I get emails from everybody, UNC or Annie Penn, Cone. And the biggest problem I have is I get the county's information, then I look at, say, Cone's, I'm like, hey, we're off a little bit. What's going on? Then I start getting phone calls. You know, Craig, you said it was 19 here, but really Annie Penn's saying it, 20, you know? So I'm just wondering, are we missing something or are we not talking about what we got or are we getting data wrong?
No, I don't think you're getting data wrong. I think what you're getting is what I report out for Cone Health is what we see in Cone Health. Because I don't know, if it's outside of Cone Health, I don't know. That's, you know, Susan, you know, would know that, and of course, Steve would know what's happening in his area. But outside of our networks, I have no idea unless I look at Susan's data.
Hopefully, we can work on finding a solution to getting everybody on the same page and same information being released.
Well, and part of it, Commissioner, is what's true at 10 o'clock in the morning may not be true at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Right.
It's just changing so fast.
Right.
That it depends on when the report was produced.
Right. Okay. Well, I do appreciate, I know Susan got her point, but I, now another point I get a lot of questions about is I know a lot of talk has been about taking temperatures of people to allow them to go places and stuff like that, but I'm kind of confused by that. Because if you're asymptomatic, then you're not going to have a temperature. You could be carrying the virus and you're going somewhere and don't even show the temperature. So everybody keeps talking about this, but I think their philosophy is wrong. Because if you're carrying it and not showing no fever, you're getting ready to spread it. Am I correct in my assumption on that or misleading there?
There are a lot of asymptomatic patients walking around.
Right.
That's why the numbers are understated, so how many people have COVID.
Right, okay.
I know about a lot of people that have COVID.
I just think it's one tool that you can use because when you do have a fever, you are more, your thought process, you're more infectious at that time period when your fever is high. Or you do have a fever, that you're more infectious to everyone else. Yes, you're still, if you're asymptomatic, you can spread it. But the sicker you are, the more easily it's spread with the fever and the more symptoms.
Right, I got you. Last question for y'all. You know, I appreciate all the information you send me in the emails. I get phone calls or emails wanting to know how they can teleconference with you. Is there some way you can work with the county so we can get y'all's information on a website or something so anybody can just say, hey, go to this website and you get the information? I know UNC Rockingham's got a website, Annie Penn's got a website. So is that the best way for citizens, if they want to teleconference with a doctor or nurse, to get in touch with you?
Are you talking about for a member of the community that needs to get in contact and telehealth?
Right.
Yes, on the Cone Health website. And you go down, you can look at e-visits and click on that, and it'll just walk you through the process.
Would it be any problem to put them links on our website? To link it to you?
I'm sorry, say that again?
To put your information on our website so if people look at our website, they can contact you. They know exactly who to get in touch with.
I will, I think it's a great idea.
I'm trying to get them to stop wasting time calling me when they can just look, you know what I'm saying?
It's a good idea. I will give you that from our end, so.
Okay. Thank y'all for everything you do. And, you know, again, if the county can help with, I know y'all keep saying PPEs and stuff like that, and I know everybody's searching all over the country for it. I mean, I know we have some companies here that are doing it. I hope they're working with you to help provide. So if not, maybe Lance can have a conversation to see if we can speed it up a little bit. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So as far as your test kits and your supplies, about how many days worth of supplies or kits do you have on hand?
I just asked that question today because someone else had asked me the same question. Because we are getting shipments in constantly and it's not what we ask for. It's only a fraction of the volume that we've asked for. So we go out and look for substitutes for certain items as well. But our materials manager, this is for Cone Health, not just Annie Penn. So we probably have two to three weeks supply of just about everything. As long as we keep getting shipments coming in, we should be okay.
So you keep about that much in reserve?
Yes.
And we're in the same position. We have a color scheme and we're green at Rockingham right now, which green's where you want to be in terms of the supply. To give you a number for everything, wouldn't be accurate, at least in my case, because we might have 20 days on hand of XYZ and 30 days on hand of APC. And, but we're in a good position on PPE.
Based on your projections, and I know each of you have different projections, you're still comfortable with your levels and your suppliers as far as being able to continue to supply you off of your projections into the future?
I do. You know, the one item on the supply list that is the hardest to get and the reason that we're recycling it are the N95 masks. They're harder to find and our return rate from our staff to re-sterilize them is not where it needs to be. It's only like 50%. But within Cone Health, we go through between 850 and 900 N95 masks a day. And if we don't recycle them, we won't have enough. So that is really the big item for us that we really have to be mindful of.
And we feel really good about the midterm, short to midterm, but the long term's so hard to predict. Anybody who tells you they know what's going to happen in two months is not really aware of the situation.
And that's one of the reasons we decided to take our patients just in one main location in Greensboro and then at Wesley, the Green Valley campus, so that the PPE can be sent there. And that's where the N95s are needed and we won't be using them as much at Annie Penn.
And there was some information, I think it came across an email, and I don't know what UNC R's position on this is, but I believe the Cone system indicated they were stopping testing as far as at physicians' offices. Is that accurate or?
My understanding is that we're only testing when the patient is symptomatic and with the symptoms that are severe enough that they require hospitalization. Then we need to rule it in or rule it out, whether it's COVID-19 or FUE or FLE. But I am not sure about physician offices. I don't think we're testing in physician offices.
We aren't either. Our priorities are probably very similar again to Cone's. Emergency patients and inpatients are priority. Healthcare professionals are priority and really sick symptomatic outpatients.
And y'all both have indicated that you get projections every so often and you've updated them. I believe you said weekly, and I don't recall how often you indicated you update them. Where can we find the past projections that you've put out there?
We haven't published our projections. We get, I don't know that they're secret, but it's not been published because it's, what the approach that UNC is taking, they own or manage 11 entities. And so each entity, like I get a number for how many inpatients I might expect on May 15th, how many of those might be in the ICU. And I can tell you that the accuracy has, the confidence interval has improved so much from the April 1st projection, which is the first projection we got, much lower now because of the effect of social distancing and all the other steps have been taken, stay at home. The projection for Rockingham is much lower. And I hope what we did with that third floor is absolute overkill. But we felt like we needed to plan for the worst and hope for the best.
Well, I'm sure it's built into that model that I share, but I don't know. I don't, because we're not going to take, we are not taking care of COVID-19 patients. I don't get a projection for Annie Penn.
But y'all send out Cone Health system email daily. At this point, it was weekly, then bi-weekly.
So are you getting them from Ryan Blackwell?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So as far as the Cone system projections and what you're using, is there a place we can find the ones that you used in the past?
I will have to find out. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. And I've heard about the elective procedures, I believe during your presentation, you mentioned within the next week or two, you may restart some of them. And then I heard you.
A lot of underscored "may."
Yes, sure. And I heard you say that not a meaningful restart until, but what does that mean? Does that mean you may start some of them or what?
You know, it's going to be a thoughtful process as to how and what we start and where we start cases next. Because when you start the, one of the reasons we discontinued elective procedures was to save PPE. That was the main reason. So we've got to determine which cases need to come first. Is it the orthopedic cases that need to come first versus something that may be less invasive that would use more PPE or not? So we gauge it along with our PPE availability and then just plan that way. I don't anticipate, because we don't anticipate the peak to hit until the end of May, first part of June. So I don't anticipate us really starting back with a lot of elective cases until after we've gone over the hump.
Okay. I mean, there's a rumor that the Hospital Association is starting to push a little bit to restart those elective procedures.
The state hospitals?
Yes. And I don't know if that is factoring into what y'all may do or may not do. And so that certainly will raise a lot of questions for the small business owners that have been closed. As far as what measures are the hospital's going to take to start increasing their revenues? And at what point in time will the small business owner be able to do the same?
There's two different reasons why you discontinue close small business owners or close businesses to start with. I think many of those that require close contact with people typically are maybe those small businesses like hair salons and spas and things like that that were affected. That was to decrease the spread. But to not do elective cases in the hospital was really, the impetus behind that was really different. It was to save on PPE. Because in the OR, you use a lot of PPE.
And as far as the governor's order that, I think it's changed over time, would each of you classify that as a social distance order or a shelter-in-place order?
The 131?
The last one. I don't know what number he's up to, but.
I think it's both.
Yeah, both and.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, but at this point, you have both places and really system-wide for both of you, you have ample amount of ventilators, is that right?
Yeah.
And based on your projections, I guess you also have ample amount of ventilators based on your current projections?
Yeah, as long as we continue to stay the course.
Okay.
And don't take our foot off the pedal and let our guard down with social distancing and stay at home, I think we'll be okay because that's what's helped flatten that curve for us. It has bought us the time to be able to get the PPE and to plan for a potential surge that it may not happen. I think we're going to see more continuous number of cases and not that repeat surge that none of us could handle.
And I believe I heard. And I believe I heard, Cindy, you mentioned that of the deaths in the Cone system, they were all over the age of 70.
They're all over the age of 70.
As far as your current hospitalization, is there a, hospitalization is going to be one question, next is going to be those in ICU. Are they over the age of 65 or 70? Are they, do they have underlying conditions?
Yeah, I don't have that data. I can't, I don't get that data for you. It's a good question to know across the system what we've got, but I can tell you, the hospitalized positive COVID-19 patients, we've had them in their 20s. So it's not just the elderly, that they're more susceptible to dying from it.
But do those folks, did they have underlying conditions?
Yeah.
Okay, even though they're in their 20s?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Some of that information is on NC Detect, I guess broad information about age ranges and death rates and things like that for NC, sorry, NC Detect, but that is a good place and some of that kind of data is in there.
Okay. Does it also tie in the age, underlying conditions, hospitalization, or just parts of it?
It ties into mostly age and it, you know, because of protected health information, they don't go too far into underlying conditions. They do try to put some of that information in, but it's not always as clear as it should be because of course about protected health information.
Mr. Elvin, I'm very interested in the UNC testing procedure. How easy is it to do? Is it significantly easier than what you were doing with LabCorp?
It's the same process for us. We do the swab and we, well, LabCorp, they actually picked it up. We have a courier that takes it to Chapel Hill.
Okay. Does it cost $199 bucks?
I don't know.
I think that's going to become a big question because the CDC is going to want a lot of data beyond just what we're doing to treat people and so cost becomes that.
So for our patients and for Cone Health's patients too, they're going to get the treatment regardless of their ability to pay for it. And they're going to get the test and the treatment regardless of their ability to pay for it.
For any of you at whichever hospital, how has the whole coronavirus situation impacted your emergency response? Do you feel like you've lost any capability because of the assets you've had to devote and so forth?
Ours has actually been increased. We discovered some processes that we could implement. We just happen to be in a place where we have an interim emergency department director and he has 17 years of military experience, most of which is in emergency preparedness. And it's providential that he's here right now because he's really led our preparedness efforts and feel really, really good about that.
Well, that's good to hear. It sounds like talking to all three of you that there's been no degradation of support for the citizens of the county in that regard.
You know, one of the things, and you've probably seen this too, you've heard discussion forever about people using the emergency department for primary care or for things that really aren't emergencies. Our volume in the emergency department is really, really low right now and I think it's evident that in normal times, people overutilize the emergency departments.
And our hospital volume has been down, our mission volumes have been down too. I think people are afraid to come to the hospital.
Well, having been in the emergency room at Baptist Hospital at 2:00 in the morning, I hope this is happening elsewhere, so that's good information.
I think it is.
Hey, I just want to congratulate you on your collaboration. I think that's well done and it's to the benefit of all of our citizens and Susan, all of your actions really mean a lot and there's no way to express our gratitude for being on top of it. I'm glad you don't have patients with the virus in your hospital at this time, or at least not a large number, but we don't know how long that's lasted. Your preparedness is very admirable. Thank you much.
Other questions, gentlemen?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would like to say though that I know I've spoken to Susan and I've had the opportunity to speak to Steve about this, our Health and Human Services Board meetings are open and you or your representatives are welcome to attend with Commissioner Richardson and I as we take a look at the health of the county holistically because you both are key players in providing that quality of life service to this community, so thank you.
The next one of which is tomorrow night at 5:30.
Bye, Phil.
Thank you both, or all three of you for being here. Item 10, Ronnie Tate, Director of Engineering and Public Utilities. I think we're going to get Bill Lester with Ronnie Tate here.
Bill Lester is here to talk about a grand opportunity for the county for a couple of our pump stations and a water pump station as well. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to Bill if you guys are okay with that.
Welcome, Mr. Lester.
Thank y'all very much. I think you had most of the information in the packet that I had sent, Ronnie, and I laid out some new maps that since we continued on and the deadline's pretty soon, I went ahead and took the liberty of moving a little closer in case you choose to do this tonight. And we put the photos on there and took care of a few little things just to show you what would happen at each station. What is before you though is a potential request to the North Carolina Department Environmental Quality. It's in their normal drinking water SRF, clean water SRF program for water and sewer that you put out once or twice a year depending on water or sewer. This year, they've got what's called ASADA funding. It is additional supplemental appropriations for the Disaster Relief Act and it's money on top of anything that FEMA and other agencies did. And the purpose of the money is to go in and help some communities take care of some issues in infrastructure that are flood prone or in a flood plain. We have not applied for a lot of grants. I heard in the next room, the CDBG project, we've been able to get a few things over the years and some economic development, but this is one, I spoke with Ronnie and I think he spoke with Lance a little bit, you know, I wanted to take the opportunity to present it to you and see if you was interested because number one, you've had some flooding of these areas, I'll talk a little bit about real quickly. But number two, I checked the eligibility and you're eligible for 100% grant. Now, there are no guarantees, that's not what I'm saying because it's a very competitive program, but I thought if you're eligible for 100%, I wouldn't be doing you justice if I didn't bring this to you and kind of make the attempt if there's some possibilities. So what these projects are, are two pump stations within your wastewater collection system that have had some flooding issues, mainly the ones I think that have had the issues are the wastewater stations, Fishing Creek down near Eden, the last point before you pump it into their system, and Hogans Creek over on 220, again, the last point before you pump it into Madison. The Fishing Creek, I think, is technically the one that is giving you the most trouble. The odd thing in the way this thing is scored, while Fishing Creek is the worst one, technically it is not in the flood plain, but it did flood during Hurricane Florence. So it's eligible because it was a flooded project. We do not get points for that one because we're not relocating it out of a designated flood plain. We are relocating it out of a flood-prone area though. Hogans Creek, not as bad, but you can see from the picture, the second picture there, it has flooded. Hogans Creek was built right on the edge of the flood plain, but over the years, maybe some development upstream, I don't know. It was remapped, so now it's just barely inside. It technically is in and you can get the credit and score well by being in the flood plain and moving it out a little. To give you a little idea of what that means, that means all of this is eligible. They both flooded, but you also are getting points to score up into the system because you're moving one of those out of a flood plain. So that gets you to the point of scoring well. The Hogans Creek Water Booster, I don't know that has ever flooded and stopped being operable, but since it's there on the edge now too, we'll submit for that one if you're interested in these because there's a little more money for some reason on the water side than the wastewater side. So we thought maybe there were some economies we could get out of trying to lump these things together if you happened to be successful on both. But the way your eligibility is calculated, we did that early on before we really started having serious discussions. The program is accepted from municipalities all over. Due to COVID-19, there are some different ways that they're going to be accepting those applications. We were very hopeful that they would not split this up. It's federally appropriated money that the state is having to come up with the projects and score them out to fill their requests back to the federal government and because of COVID-19, they finally decided to split. They're only going to award 60% of it. I think that's a little bit of a, you know, a problem for us because we're ready and capable, if you were to choose to move forward tonight, to be in that first pool. We would prefer all of the money to be allocated in that first pool, but that's not the way it's going to be. So you're going to be graded in the first pool. If you score well enough, you'll get an offer. If not, you're going to be automatically enrolled in the second pool of money that'll be in the fall. So the two projects, again, you've got Hogans Creek and Fishing Creek on the wastewater side. That would be on the wastewater application, $2,735,000 and on the water application, I think that total is $1,791,500. Those are complete replacements. It is complete replacements and by program standard, it is what they call like-for-like. We're not planning capacity increases, but at least one of these stations, as you know, might be in the line of fire of something that you would like to consider and that's not a problem. It just means you would pay for that extra amount. Now, the good part about that is the economy of scale. If you build a project and you only paid for the oversizing, you get it done a lot cheaper than if you go at it all along. So we would obviously take that into account when we go through the process as well. It is fairly straightforward. The one thing that you can do upfront is tell them that if you don't get 100%, you don't even want to be considered. In other words, if they came back with a different offer, I'm never sure how to recommend that because you're not obligated until you sign on a dotted line, so you can always reconsider. It's just whether or not you want to kind of let the division know upfront if you need a certain amount of grant to go forward. Now, I know, at least I think what we're doing is we're looking for 100%. And there's always a chance that you could have maybe higher than 75, but less than 100. Maybe it gets close enough, you're interested, but I'll leave that up to you. But we can tell them upfront if you so choose. If you don't get 100, you're not interested. Any questions on that?
Can we leave it open enough to where we don't have to take 100? Or it would not necessarily require, but we request 100. In other words, you're saying that you can say it upfront that we need 100. Can we work on the verbiage a little bit to where we request 100, but not obligated to, we don't have to get 100 and we could still move forward?
Yes.
Okay.
It's as simple as checking boxes, I just won't check the box.
So Bill, if they said 100% of it, the county has that option to fund the other 10%?
We're going to apply for 100.
Sure.
If they come back to you and offer the other, yes, that's the way you'll, I'll probably back here if that came forward and say, are you, do you want to move forward or do you want to reverse course?
We have to accept it. We accept it at the end of the day, regardless if it's 100 or 85.
A couple of us up here on this board have been through problems with these pumping stations, so we don't want to go through that again if we got a chance. Other comments?
I would accept a motion to endorse Mr. Lester's application for the grant.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion? Hear none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay.
Does that cover the resolution? There is a resolution that goes with this.
Would you modify the-
It includes the resolution.
It includes the resolution.
Okay.
We'll take it back.
Bill? Appreciate you. Glad you were on top of that.
Thank y'all very much. Again, I hope we're successful, but I certainly wanted to kind of take that chance and hopefully in September, I mentioned to Ronnie, there's a couple of little things with some asset inventory stuff for the infrastructure we might could apply for, I'd like to take a look at, so I'll be back and we'll talk about that. That's another, I think that one's almost 100% grant, but we'll talk about that in the future.
Well, we look forward to that.
Thank you.
New business? Lance?
We just, I may have to pose.
All right. Hearing that, we would accept a motion to move into closed session, which we will conduct right where we sit.
You going to do comments?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I would have mentioned comments had comments been on the agenda.
So my agenda.
Is it on yours?
Yeah.
On mine?
Number 11.
Yeah. Well, that said, Commissioner Travis, do you have any comments?
No comment.
No comment. Mr. Pertle, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just want to echo, it's been stated tonight and I was going to address it in my commissioner comments, but a big thank you to all the first responders and the healthcare workers at all our, both of our hospitals in the county and our health department, all the folks that work out there providing essential services to our community. Very much appreciative of what they do, from the EMS to the fire to the police. These fine folks represent our community well. I also want to thank those businesses that support the first responders and the healthcare workers. I think we was given a list today of those folks that's fed them, that's provided meals for our, at our hospitals and our health department. And we've also had, we've had people, private citizens doing everything from making masks to just words of encouragement. So I know this is a trying time, uncharted waters, we've never seen anything like this, but it just makes me proud to be from Rockingham County when you see the response from the private sector and the community. And that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Pertle. Commissioner Berger? Yes. Yeah, I'll reiterate a lot of what Commissioner Pertle indicated as far as a big thank you to those that are on the front lines of dealing with this virus. And it is difficult and stressful for them, but we're fortunate to have the healthcare team that we do have here in the county. We're also very fortunate that Wake Forest Baptist Medical Center has stepped up and started with sample testing in North Carolina, working with a group out of California, along with a few other states. This sample testing will provide us with real information, real data as opposed to, I guess, projections. And with that data, hopefully we can utilize that information to properly prepare our citizens as we move forward in dealing with the virus. I also want to continue to thank the churches that are complying with the governor's order and allowing folks to continue to worship under the new guidelines. So thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Berger. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just like the other commissioners, I really do appreciate the first responders, the healthcare workers, but additionally, I'd like to thank our taxpayers and citizens in the county as well for taking this seriously. This is a serious time, it's a scary time, but we appreciate you guys treating this as serious as it really is. So thank you, citizens of Rockingham County. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, sir. First off, let me remind everybody that's listening, we've got a census going on and if you haven't participated, please do so. You can do that online, you could, you probably receive some mail, if you did, toss it away, go online. If you did, toss it away, go online. But do participate in the census because it means a lot to this county and the whole state as far as representation and potential funding. I'll mention again that our next meeting in May the 4th, we will have public comment there, and if you wish to make public comment, since we're using this format, I would ask you to contact Ms. Jennifer Woods at 342-8102, and let us know about that ahead of time. There've been a lot of question about elimination of the various emergency actions that we're taking in relation to the virus. The coronavirus is not going to go away. However, we as commissioners will be looking at a phased elimination of these procedures as appropriate and based on data rather than strictly opinion. And I would caution everybody out there, the citizens, that we are not going to do anything that we feel would overtax our health facilities, hospitals, doctors, our health department. We recognize we're not going to eliminate COVID-19. It's going to be with us like the flu and colds and so forth forever, and that some of the protocols that we are involved with now will have to become habit in the future to minimize our exposure to this. But again, any recommendations that we make are going to be based on data and professional advice. Gentlemen, are there other comments or issues that we need to address prior to the closed session? Hearing none, we'd look for a motion to enter that closed session.
Mr. Chairman, making a motion, you know, the last session, which is in the section 143, yes, three, one, 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 one. Let the session expand a bit.
Thank you, sir. Moved by Mr. Perdle.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Berger. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Guys, you want a two-minute break before we open the closed session?